Right.
I've been doing this for years, just about every.
You asked.
Write a question down and ask it later.
Well, he's my.
We think up the.
Well, good morning. We want to welcome everybody here today and just encourage you to put your cell phones on mute, please, if you will. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order of the March 8th, 2023 LCTC Board of Supervisors Meeting. And first, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor Salaf will lead us in the pledge. All right, next we'll have Ms. Clon Peter call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Happy to do so. And I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the board and our audience that this meeting is being livestreamed for any of our viewers at home. Supervisor Mount is present. Supervisor Jackson. Supervisor Roman Hardy. Supervisor Bork. Supervisor Bradford. Is absent Supervisor Butler McIntyre is absent Supervisor Tim Hardy. Supervisor Lee. Supervisor McConduit. Supervisor Murphy. Is present Supervisor Price. Present Supervisor Salaf. Supervisor Smith. Present Supervisor Spawn is absent Supervisor Toops. Present Supervisor DuRett. Is present Supervisor Jimenez. Madam Chairwoman, we do have a quorum of the board present.
Thank you, Ms. Clon Peter. Next, we have the approval of our meeting agenda for March 8th, 2023. Are there any corrections or additions? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
A motion by Mr. Price and a second by Ms. McConduit to approve the agenda.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion passes. Approval of the meeting minutes from December the 7th, 2022, or any corrections or additions? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Most of my supervisor Roman Hardy and a second by Mr. Salah.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next, we have the consent agenda items for consideration of the board.
Yes, I'll provide that recommendation. Staff recommends that the board approve the consent agenda, which consists of items F1 through F8.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Mr. Toops. And there's a second by Mr. Jackson.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Madam Chair, if we may, one of the items that is a part of this consent agenda is under item number six at Louisiana Delta Community College. Given the partnership that has evolved between Louisiana Delta Community College, Fletcher Technical Community College, and our friends at the University of Louisiana Monroe. I would like to ask that Chancellor Randy Esters join us at the at the table to talk a little bit about this program proposal. What we are finding more and more is program sharing across institutions is the direction that will help us to be able to leverage workforce programs in every corner of the state. On behalf of the people in Louisiana. With that, I'll turn it to you, Chancellor Esters, for a few comments about the proposed program.
You pull that mic to you, that'd be great.
Well, and Chair Mount, Supervisors, thank you for giving us just a few minutes to.
Okay, so there's there's a button there.
This one? All right, there we go.
Okay, now you're ready to roll.
I do not have a degree in technology, so.
Me neither.
Anyway, thank y'all for giving us a few moments to visit with you this morning. I've invited Dr. Kerry Cortez, who is the Associate Vice Chancellor for Academics at Fletcher. And also Dr. Mark Arant, who is the Provost at U of University of Louisiana at Monroe, to join me this morning. We started talking and thinking about the Medical Lab Assistant Program in October of '21, after we got a visit from some of our partners in the hospitals. And some of the labs in the Northeast Louisiana area. We immediately reached out to Fletcher and ULM because they had the expertise, which we did not have, and that's how partnerships are born. We wanted to do something different than a traditional program. We wanted something that was authentically seamless between our K-12 partners. So that students could go all the way from high school to med school and never miss a lick.
Chancellor, can you say that one more time? I just want to be sure everyone heard that because that's worth pausing on. Say it one more time. High school to med school? Is that what you said?
We authentically seamless from high school to med school and do it in a way that they really don't even recognize that they're changing institutions as they're going from one to the other. So we had the dream, we had the idea, we did not have the money. About that time, we were also working on a teacher ed initiative. And we wanted the same thing. We wanted teachers to be able to go to the classroom from the two-year college through the university into the classroom seamlessly. Congresswoman Julia Letlow reached out to us and asked if we had any projects we were working on that could use an earmark. And we said, why? Yes, yes, we do. So we took the we took the opportunity to build a model. Aimed at both teacher ed and med lab technician, but more than that, aimed at creating something different, creating something where our high school partners. Our university partner and us could all work in the same space and do it, sharing funds, sharing faculty, sharing curriculum, and also sharing students. We reached out for the med lab to Leah Gootrow and Dr. Cortez over at Fletcher. We asked them if they would share their curriculum. And if they would also help us to teach when we got the program launched. So this model. I'll just go through it real quick. I'll give you the overarching idea behind the model. We'll build a lab at Delta. The the funds are there. It'll be a lab. Worthy of a med school worthy of, I mean, it'll be a world-class laboratory. We've been in collaboration with both ULM and Fletcher, constructing this this lab, ordering the proper equipment, ordering the things that the hospitals have told us that they want. And we've we're building that as we speak. We haven't purchased anything yet, but the model is in place. ULM will sponsor the program under their accreditation. We will seek accreditation as we move forward. But ULM, in the meantime, will help us write that. They will help provide the oversight for it. They'll help us with collaboration on sharing instructors. And that in turn, they will use the same lab that we use. When the students finish with us. They will become ULM students on the same campus with the same instructors in the same lab space. They will be able to get. After their first semester, after their first summer, they will get a phlebotomy certificate. They will go two more semesters. They will get a CTS in medical lab assistant. They will go another semester. They will get a diploma, a technical diploma, then the associate's degree, then they switch over to ULM. Where they will get the it's medical science, medical lab scientist. Once they finish with that, they take two classes outside of the program and they're eligible to go to VCOM, which is the medical school on ULM's campus. We will provide in the first few years, Louisiana Delta will do the clinical part. We will oversee that. We will do the lab part. Louisiana Fletcher, not only did we we adopt their curriculum, but they will be providing the didactic part, the lectures. With distance distant learning. So that's the, oh, and the last thing is our students will have. An ID, and this is a little thing, but it's a big thing to me. They will have an ID that is co-branded with Louisiana Delta and ULM. So that they don't even have to change IDs when they finish with us. So with that, I would like to invite Dr. Cortez to say a few words about their part.
Hi, good morning, Chair Mount. So sorry. Good morning, Chair Mount, Dr. Sullivan and Board of Supervisors. We are excited to partner with Delta on this initiative. And we are also working on evolving our med lab tech program to try to meet students where they are, so they don't have to come to campus from eight to two every day. So we are already in the process of putting the didactic and the lectures online through remote learning, distance education. So we are excited about the opportunity to partner with Delta in this initiative to fulfill the workforce demands and in the most efficient way possible. We at Fletcher, we have a history with developing and offering a medical lab tech program in collaboration with industry relevant to needs. And we're happy to be able to do this program share.
I'd like to invite Dr. Arant to speak.
This is a, honestly, it's a long time coming. We started this in 2021, but ULM is more than happy to serve in this role. We get a lot of students, quality students from Delta, and our region is in desperate need of medical professionals. So if we can create new pathways from high school all the way through middle school or professional school, we need to do that. And this is just one of the many opportunities we're working with Delta on right now. Others include, as the Chancellor has mentioned, education. We're looking at nursing, drones, and agriculture on the list. Hopefully, a two plus two with agriculture will be coming very soon. Our faculty are currently working on a new Bachelor of Applied Science degree in organizational leadership. So those students who finish with. A an AAS degree now have a bachelor's that they can reach, hopefully beyond a bachelor's into a master's degree, maybe an MBA or something like that. So it's, we feel like it's our obligation to partner in any way we can to move our region forward, and it's really an honor to speak with you this morning.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Okay, Rand, if I can just just add, Louisiana Delta and ULM Monroe have a storied past in terms of collaboration. You guys, Louisiana Delta would not be today were it not for ULM Monroe. The partnership that that you guys have just talked about is the reason that Louisiana Delta was created in the northeast part of the state. Thank you to you. Thank you to Dr. Barry. Thank you for the leadership that recognizes the role of our university in the northeast part of the state. Thank you for that. Questions from the board? If I may, I want to I want to call timeout for just one second on the board meeting, and I would I would like to have everyone look to the back of the room. In the back of the room, this is this is what goes on every day at our community college campuses all over Louisiana, where we have eighth-grade students today from Woodlawn Middle School. Who are joining us at Baton Rouge Community College to learn about careers, to learn about degrees and programs that are going on right here at Baton Rouge Community College. Chancellor Smith, always good to see school buses on the Baton Rouge Community College campus because we know opportunity for young people, just like the ones in the back of the room here today. Are happening right here at Baton Rouge Community College. How about a round of applause for the group? You know, I have to share, members of the staff said that we need to realign the tour that these young folks are taking today. Because we don't want to disturb the board meeting. So are you kidding me? Disturb the board meeting? Bring them in the room. Let's let's introduce these folks, so.
Dr. Sullivan, I'm not sure that the students know where they are, if you want to let the students know.
Great point.
Yeah. We pulled them halfway off of their tour and directed them down the hallway just for a second so they could see you guys in action and you could see them in action, too.
So I think what Chancellor Smith did was promised y'all Chick-fil-A in this room, right? He got you in here and promised you Chick-fil-A. What you have in front of you is is the the board that governs all 12 of Louisiana's community and technical colleges. And in particular, the one right here at Baton Rouge Community College. This board is the group that makes policies and procedures and puts those in place to make sure that you have access to the two-year college mission. So very proud of you guys. Thank you for for taking time out of your schedules to be at Baton Rouge Community College today. And also thank you for joining our board meeting for the March 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome.
All right, any any further questions for for Chancellor Esters of the group?
Merely just a compliment. I mean, I think this is a classic example of what our whole system is about, and that's working together and collaborating together. With the assets that we have to do really great things for the future of our state and for the for the students who become our taxpayers. So thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I suspect Supervisor Smith has a word to add on.
No, I did go say it looks like they brought all eighth graders from Woodlawn, right? I think so.
I did my class, it's all of them.
Very good. Chancellor.
I think that there are 900 eighth-grade students that will be on campus today, is what I was told. They're coming in different timeframes, but this is our first set of students that will be on campus today, and they will continue throughout the day touring campus.
Chancellor, all 900 of those are going to be enrolled next next year, right? I'm just just checking.
No pressure, Willie.
Wow. Okay, Madam Chair, I'm sorry for for adding a quick item there during the consent agenda, but I thought that one was important for the board to see. For the for the audience to hear about the collaboration that is going on. Again, thank you to Dr. Arant for making the trip down to Baton Rouge.
Absolutely. I totally concur. Okay, next, we'll have the following reports. I'd like to invite Supervisor Erica McConduit to introduce the guest from Louisiana Healthcare Connections to make a special presentation.
Absolutely. Well, Dr. Sullivan, this is going to build on the phenomenal presentation we just heard. And it must be the day of healthcare investments because we know that the healthcare industry is certainly one that could utilize an injection and infusion of new talent, new ideas, new innovation. So we are excited to contribute our part to the community college and the community college system and invest in two of our signature colleges. First, I'm going to invite up our team. If you guys don't know, again, in my in my real day job, I'm the Chief Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer at Centene Corporation. Centene is the largest managed care organization in the country, ensuring, providing insurance to one in every 15 Americans. In Louisiana, we have Louisiana Healthcare Connections, and I am going to invite Jamie Schlotman to the table, who is our President and CEO of Louisiana Healthcare Connections. As well as Ashley Neder, who is our Vice President of Health Equity at LHCC, which is what the acronym we call our our health plan in Louisiana. And they will tell you a bit about the health plan and just the phenomenal investments, long-term investments, because I just want to make sure that we're clear that this is a long-term partnership. And we see it as one that, you know, we look to continue doing for many years. So Jamie.
All right, make sure I get the right button.
I think we're good.
You're on.
Yes.
Rock and roll. First of all, Chair Mount, and to the distinguished members of this board, thank you all very much. My first time to be here and very impressed already. When do we get Chick-fil-A? As Erica said, and I've had the pleasure of working with Erica for some time, going back to her days as CEO of the Urban League when I was on the board there. So appreciate her connecting us with this this great organization. Louisiana Healthcare Connections, we are the largest, very, I promise to be brief, too. Louisiana Healthcare Connections, we are the largest Medicaid company here in the state of Louisiana. We cover 520,000 Medicaid recipients. We are based, our headquarters is based in Baton Rouge. We have over 600 employees scattered throughout the state who are all Louisiana residents. So we're very proud of that. And we've been in business, literally, we opened our doors in 2011 and started operations in 2012. So we've been here for quite some time. But today, we're very excited, too, because I want to talk about some of our ongoing partnerships, and we are looking to improve. A lot, as we do every day, the health of our individual residents of the state. And one of the areas that we really look to is around health disparities and trying to create a more inclusive. And a representative, if you will, system of healthcare. Erica was polite enough to introduce us to a couple of the Chancellors. At Bossier Parish Community College and also at Delgado Community College. And I won't quite tell you, I know the Chancellors are behind me, but I will tell you, in getting to meet them and their teams, personally, for me, I was completely blown away. The dedication, the commitment, their vision, their passion was amazing and still is. So we're very, very, that just that just got me. I feel remiss if I didn't say that about them and their teams. But what we've come together is we're going to fund a million-dollar program. It's going to be called the Equity and Healthcare Equity and Health and Care Initiative. And again, focusing on diversity and inclusion in the healthcare workforce, as well as economic and social determinants of health. It's a multi-year investment. And we're really focusing on creating scholarship opportunities and a lot of the programs that these institutions provide, medical coding is a big one. Community health work, health coaches, allied health programs at both Bossier Community College and Bossier Parish Community College and Delgado Community College. We're also going to gear towards trying to find people for these programs that have previously or could be on Medicaid today. We do make a very good effort to try to assist people. I don't like to say we're helping people. We're trying to assist people to lift them up. And this is a way we know we can do it. So and our mission here is at Louisiana Healthcare Connections is to transform Louisiana's health, one person at a time, and creating health equity for our Medicaid population. And with me is actually a much more intelligent individual than I am right here, Ashley Neder, who is our Vice President of Diversity and Inclusion. Ashley Neder, who is our Vice President of Diversity and Inclusion. I know you don't have notes right in front of you, but would you, can I put you on the spot and say a couple of things about what you, what you're doing? So I'll get in trouble for this later.
Good morning. Thank you again for your time. I am extremely excited. I did have the pleasure of meeting with Rick Bateman yesterday, just to discuss pretty much the, you know, development of this partnership as well as the scholarship program. One of the major things that I guess I would highlight, as Jamie has talked about, is the importance of not only just decreasing health disparities, but also being able to assist with addressing social determinants of health. And one of those being education and how education ties directly to health outcomes, as they often say, health is wealth. So with this particular program, you know, I look at it as a multi-pronged approach to not only addressing health equity and health disparities, but also how can we also assist with the lived experience of most of our members and our membership as well as our community. So thank you guys for your time. I absolutely am excited for this opportunity and great things to come. Thank you.
Actually, I didn't see nerves.
Ashley's a pharmacist, by the way. But, but can we call the chancellors forward?
Yeah, we'd like to.
Yes.
Checks as you could.
Yes. Come on.
If you guys give us a second, we'll put the backdrop up for the check present.
Okay. And, and again, as Jamie said, it is a million dollars. We're doing 500,000 to each of the community colleges with whom we are going to partner and we're excited to get to work.
There we are. Supervisor McConduit, I, I think it's only appropriate that we take a moment to say thank you. Because you've been working on this for several years. This has been in, in many regards, I, I think a labor of love for you and one that allows you to bring together your day job and, and your role on this board. I cannot tell you enough how much we appreciate you seeing the value of these colleges and taking that to your daytime job. Thank you.
I got the memo.
Excellent presentation. And again, just, you know, working together, we can do such great things for the system and the students. Sarah, we'll send you a commencement schedule in the next week or so. And I'm, you are all invited and we encourage you to attend the commencement in your area. Just let her know if you're going to be able to attend or not. Next, we'll have the presence report. Dr. Sullivan?
There we are. A little better. Let, let me begin with a quick reference to a very important day today. Today is International Women's Day. I think it's for an organization that is chaired by one of the most capable women I have ever worked with, people I have ever worked with, frankly. Also an organization that allows opportunities for females to grow and to contribute in the ways that we see our chancellors contributing. But an organization that also serves a broad number of females in this state, two thirds of our students are female. It is incredibly important to us that we serve this population, that we honor this population as appropriate. So just couldn't let the day pass without mentioning. Today, we also have with us some very special friends, a guy that I have only recently gotten to know, but I'm going to tell you. It, it is one of my favorite stories in all of higher education. This gentleman comes to us with incredible experience, a law degree, a gentleman that spent a number of years at the University of Michigan, came to us from the University of Wisconsin. And, and that, that organization, I think in many ways helped this gentleman to be perfectly situated at the right time and in the right place to lead our HBCU system in the Southern University system. Dr. Shields, would you please join us at the table? Dr. Shields, before we begin assigning ceremony, I wanted to give you an opportunity to say a few words to, to this board. Just a, an incredible partner already in his very short time here in Louisiana. And with that, Dennis, I'll turn to you.
Let's check your mic. Let's see.
Technology challenged. Thanks for the warm welcome and I recognize a few faces already. You know, we, as the president of the only historically black college university system, we have a, a very special role. Not just in Baton Rouge or in Louisiana, but across the, the country. And one of the things I've learned over time, particularly in this era, the opportunity to collaborate with our sister institutions is extraordinarily important. Louisiana has great workforce needs and challenges. Higher education has to be prepared to respond to that. The role that the community college system is extraordinarily critical and needs to be supported and collaborated with. My focus in my career, I, I come from pretty modest backgrounds. I'm not going to bore you with all that. But higher education serves as, for me personally, the portal to a completely different life. I will tell you that my wife sometimes tells friends of ours when I briefly tell them something about my story, is that I should be in jail or dead. The reason I'm not is because of higher education. And it inspires the work that I do. It is an extraordinary opportunity to interact with the community college system and support your students and to support the state. Today, we're going to be doing something remarkable. We're going to be addressing a really important need at the state, nurses. The collaboration with LCTCS and Southern University is extraordinarily important. And, and the last thing I would mention. So I've been, I've served as chancellor 12 years somewhere else. I'm now the president of Southern. One thing that's clear to me is good things don't happen without other outstanding people supporting us and being committed to the mission. So I really can't take credit for the work that's happened here. Dean Brown of our School of Nursing is doing fabulous work and she and her team are the ones that are responsible on our side for coordinating this effort to make this happen. And I'm grateful to her and her team and you and your team, Monte, for this opportunity.
Very good. And I, I would open it up to the board and ask if there are any questions of Chancellor Shields. Well, let, let me say thank you again for being on the Louisiana team. One of the things that is so exciting is to watch, if, if you didn't notice, we've been having some challenges over on the bluff with infrastructure for some time. In a matter of a couple of months, this gentleman had the nation's infrastructure team on the bluffs, trying to solve that problem. And, and for that, we all owe you a debt of gratitude for jumping in and grabbing a hold of what is a, a tough circumstance, but making it better for our students. At this point, we want to transition, if we can, to a bit of a, 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 a set. We'll pull around to the front here. I told Katie earlier, this is sort of like moving sets at the theater, right? We're moving around today. But I would like to ask the team from Southern to join us at the table. We'll move chairs around and we'll do the, the signing here. Fair? Very good.
What's wrong with that? Dating game. You can be bachelor one, I can be bachelor two.
Your work.
No value to me. No value to me. We want to know.
For our next piece, we have a, a group who is joining us from the Upper Iowa University. I'd like to ask again, Wendy, if you could join us and, and also our friends from Upper Iowa, where we have a transfer agreement with Upper Iowa University. You may not be familiar with Upper Iowa University, but it is an organization that has a broad footprint, not only just here in Louisiana, but across the nation, serving many of our military veterans. And so we want to make sure that, that those veterans have an opportunity to gain those degrees as well. So we welcome you with us today and look forward to, to sign an agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Duffy, thank you for taking the time to be with us today. Always good to, to have partners at the table. You've heard a number of partnerships this morning. So I'll turn to you and, and ask, we'd like to make a few comments to the, to the board.
Okay. Well, first off, it's a real honor and privilege to be here. I want to thank Wendy for all the work that you have done and to all the members here. Especially a special presentation I'll make to the president and the chair and to Wendy. And the rest of you will get it later on. I am a retired military officer, 20 years, a West Point Army officer. And bottom line is we always give challenge coins to those who do great things. And this board right here, this group is doing great things for this country, for the state, for these individuals. I can tell you that right now. And so I will be sending coins to each one, every one of you, but I'll be able to present some to you in, in person after this. So. So having said that as a bribe, okay, UIU is very proud to partner with the Louisiana Community and Technical College System and to support the LCTCS Start Here and Go Anywhere campaign. This partnership is well designed, well aligned with UIU's mission to provide quality educational opportunities accessible through varied delivery methods to inspire success and empower lives. Interestingly, I see that the LCTCS motto is changing lives, creating futures. And UIU's motto is changing lives one student at a time. This is a partnership meant to be, no doubt in my mind. UIU is very committed to the future success of Louisiana and our graduates. In 1993, UIU established our first location in Louisiana at Fort Polk. We now have five locations in Louisiana. Fort Polk, Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Alexandria and DeRidder. And all those locations are face-to-face, plus all the other modalities. In total, we've had 2,200, approximately 2,200 graduates in the state of Louisiana, working right here in Louisiana. I'm often asked, what is Upper Iowa University known for? We're known for three things. Accessibility, affordability and success. Accessibility, established in 1857. In the seventies, Upper Iowa started a thing called correspondence programs. Some have heard of that before. We're still doing that to this day. We celebrate 50 years of doing that. We're, we're giving access to those that are incarcerated to complete their degrees, to reduce recidivism. And then in the eighties, we started to go to other locations. So right now we're in nine different states, 21 locations. We're on eight major military bases. We have online offerings for the Navy and for the Air Force. In the nineties, we started, we started a thing called online, one of the first ones. Expanded that very quickly. And in the two thousands, we were actually one of Zoom's first partners, so early that in 2012, they froze our price. And that paid off quite well when COVID hit. And so I will tell you this, we've been ahead of the curve. And that paid off quite well when COVID hit. And so I will tell you this, we've been ahead of the curve all the time. And what I'm really trying to tell you right now is that the way that we're set up, rest assured, UIU's accessibility aligns with LCTCS commitment to eliminate geographic barriers to post-secondary educational programs. And by the way, every one of these modalities, every one of these things that we do, they're aligned over six sessions. Some of us came from the old semester system. Some are still in that semester system. We do six sessions a year. Everything's aligned, so it allows everybody to do different things, however it fits them, wherever their location is. Next, affordability. Every LCTCS graduate receives the UIU Transfer Connection Scholarship. That's $1,500. And there are no hidden fees. That's the other thing students shouldn't be looking at all the time. Are there any hidden fees? The final thing is success. Within 12 months after graduation, and I encourage you all to check this out for all your schools, within 12 months after graduation, 93% of our graduates have a job or are in graduate program. Within that 12 months after graduation, the national average is 86%, the regional average is 88%. And that's according to the National Association of Colleges and Employers, NACE. In summary, UIU is very proud to partner with the LCTCS to change lives, create futures, and enable our students to start here and go anywhere. Finally, I'd like to recognize and thank our UIU team members in Baton Rouge. And if I'll ask you to stand when I call you, Cynthia Bentley, our Regional Director. Bernetta. Bernetta Kingston, Louisiana Partnership and Development Coordinator. DeQuinton Glenn, our Baton Rouge Center Director. And Princess Redden, she is not with us here. She is actually one of our administrators. This team is fantastic, and we really do enjoy being here, representing, and helping the students here in this great state of Louisiana. And we want to continue that and expand that partnership. So thank you all very much.
Very much. Thank you so much. Let me ask, any questions from members of the board? All right, Doc, thank you so much. Very much appreciate you being with us, and thank you to the team. All right, if I can, I'd like to transition to our next item and invite Chancellor Wainwright, Dr. Carlson. Chancellor, I also wanted to make special note of Florida Parish's CEO, Joey Dominic, who's joining us. Joey, thank you for taking the time and certainly also good to see you. The Director of Business Solutions, which is a little different title than I recall, but Bridget LaBord, who is no stranger to this board either. So with that, Chancellor Wainwright, we'll turn to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for hosting us today because we have an exciting piece of our mission that we want to share with you. We noticed during the pandemic, it was estimated by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation that we would see a youth disconnection rate of about 6 million for various reasons across the nation. And we also noticed during the pandemic that our mission transformed where suddenly we looked beyond the walls of bricks and mortar of our campuses, satellite sites. We were all experimenting and many of us were successful with online learning. We also saw a broad range of technical opportunities like mobile education and training labs available to us. So I'm here today to introduce a team who's going to share with you an exciting story where our mission has now found its home at the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center. We are extremely excited about that great work. With us, we have our CEO, Joey Dominic, a leader in the field, not only in our state and nation, but also an incredible team who executes for our college. One who's no stranger to you all, Dr. Jim Carlson, and also Bridget LaBord. Just to share with you, you made an investment in Certified Workforce Development certification for our system. Bridget is a graduate of that program. And Jim is actually completing his semester of Certified Workforce Developer. He was registered the year he was appointed interim at River Parishes and said, I want back in. I want to finish what I started. So anyway, excited to have this team who has executed on this incredible initiative where our mission has found its home at the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joey to share a little bit with you about juvenile detention, the work that's being done in Louisiana and what our ultimate goals are in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Wainwright, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors here. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is Joseph Dominic. I go by Joey. I am the Executive Director of the Florida Parish's Juvenile Justice District. We are the largest juvenile justice district in the state of Louisiana. We encompass five parishes, about 3,700 square miles, and about 580,000 citizens. I operate the largest juvenile detention center in the state of Louisiana. There's 13 juvenile detention centers. We are one of only two regional detention centers in the state. All the other detention centers are run by their respective parishes. There's about 625 detention centers in the country. A majority of them do not have partnerships with technical colleges. We're talking about pre-trial facilities. These are not facilities that are run by their respective states. They are run by the counties or the regions that they're located in, and they're funded by either tax millages, like our detention center is, or by property tax or by sales tax if they're run by a parish board. I report to a commission that's appointed by the district attorneys and the judges of the five parishes that I serve. And I first want to thank y'all for the engagement that I've seen today, just being a spectator in the audience. I've spoken before many boards regarding juvenile justice, regarding at-risk youth, regarding young people. And often I do not see such an engagement, so I want to share my hats off to you for that. It's good to have a board that's engaged with education and what's going on with our young people in the state of Louisiana. Getting back to Louisiana, we could do a lot more for kids. We could do a lot more for putting at-risk youth first. That's not happening as much as it should, but in our district it is. When kids are adjudicated, that's convicted in the adult world. They're usually placed in the Office of Juvenile Justice custody. That's the state agency that's tasked with rehabilitating those youth. OJJ, as it's affectionately known in the industry, is suffering from a small budget and busting at the seams of kids coming into their facilities, as you've probably read in the newspaper. When I get in the newspaper, I try to make it a positive article and show what we can do good with kids. Not that OJJ's not, but they're understaffed and they don't have the resources they need. So with that said, around 2017, I saw as a vision of doing something with the kids that were basically bottlenecking in our detention center, waiting to go off to juvenile justice placements through OJJ. Somewhere around 2019, I worked with my Board of Commissioners to establish a post-adjudicated program where youth could actually be committed to the juvenile detention center by their respective judiciary. And then we would be tasked with rehabilitating them and providing them with educational opportunities. Since then, that partnership has materialized into a bigger partnership with North Shore Technical Community College. I did not know Dr. Wainwright that well before we started on this journey. In working with him, I found out he shares the same undergrad as me in criminal justice. And maybe that's why it made it a little bit easy to get this thing going. And actually, it wasn't that easy. The two folks on either side of me also contribute with that. I got to tell you, you have some rock stars that work at this, that work at this technical college. We started what I believe to be the very first partnership between a detention center and a technical college in the state of Louisiana. There are other similar partnerships nationwide, but like I said in the beginning, a majority of them are not partnering with detention centers. So a majority of counties throughout our country are not doing what you see going on here. Since we started that partnership, we have helped kids get their high school diploma, not their GED, their diploma, as well as technical certifications through the technical college, and subsequently jobs as they get back into the community. Because we see education and employment as tools in the tool belt of kids, so they do not return back into the system.
So I've had the distinct pleasure of working with the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center staff, and it's just been an incredible journey. But we have worked to create programs for the post-adjudicated youth. And we started this back in 2019, having those discussions. Well, in fall of 2021, yes, in the middle of the pandemic, we worked to create a program, Career Exploration and Certification Program. And 10 of the post-adjudicated youth were enrolled in that program. And that program exposed those 10 youth to 10 careers. So we brought our instructors, our subject matter experts in fields like welding and automotive and pharmacy tech, nursing, phlebotomy. We brought our instructors out to the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center to provide information, demonstration, hands-on activities for those youth to expose them to those careers. The same nine-week program, the youth actually earned three industry-based certifications. PPE, in the middle of the pandemic, Precision Measuring Instrument, and OSHA-10. Those same youth also earned 11 Career Safe Employability Skills certifications. So that was a great success. So we decided the next year, fall of 2022, that we would also create a program. But this time, we did something a little bit different. We did a basic life skills and certification program where 15 of the post-adjudicated youth participated in presentations on financial literacy, practical math, cooking basics by our chef at the college, as well as entrepreneurship. Those, 12 of those 15 youth at Joey's Detention Center earned a certification that's not very easy to earn. It's the NCCER Construction Site Safety Technician and Construction Site Safety Supervisor Certification. They also earned OSHA-30. So at the close of our presentation, Mr. Dominic is going to share some success stories of those, how those programs impacted his students.
It's good to see everybody again. When you have a partnership, it's always important to have a common goal, equality, desire, and a little passion. And I think the combination of North Shore and the Florida Parish's Juvenile Detention Center definitely demonstrated that, but also brought in our partners with Absolute Safety, NC3, the Southeast Louisiana University Small Business Development Center, and then certainly our own instructors on our campus. And that's made us to be able to be here today and talk about some of those successes. One of the things I did want to also mention is we have a new partnership that's occurring right now at the LaCombe Campus with the 22nd District Attorney's Office, Warren Montgomery's office. And that is part of their diversion program. And they have so many back cases for first-time nonviolent offenders. We've partnered with them to help provide training opportunities. So if they earn a certification or degree, it could be in lieu of their, otherwise would be, you know, hefty fines or community service. So the main goal is to get people in the right track to do better decisions and then ultimately be able to take care of themselves and their families. So that's kind of what we're here and we're trying to do with the juveniles, but also further with our adult population.
So before we close, I just want to share just a few stories of actual at-risk kids that came into our detention center and that we partnered with North Shore Tech in getting them certifications and a little bit of higher education beyond their high school diploma. The first story is about a young man. He was a very violent kid when he came in. He was very street smart, as his teacher will attest to, and was a very different picture of an individual when he left us. I could truly say rehabilitation occurred. And while he was with us through North Shore, he earned his OSHA-10. He entered a writing contest that was a statewide writing contest. He actually won first place in a $500 prize. And then when he left us, he was hired offshore in the oil and gas industry. And as far as I know, he is still working there. I think it's great, not that he's offshore so far away, but that he's not in the same environment. Often our kids leave out of juvenile detention, or even they leave out of the state system, and they return right back to the environment. When I go and do talks, people always say, oh, man, pardon my French, but you must work with some badass kids. And I say, no, I don't work with badass kids. I work with kids that have done badass things. There's a difference. Kids aren't inherently born bad. They learn that behavior, and it's usually because they don't have a positive adult role model in their life, or they don't have a role model in life that actually cares about them. And so this kid was a testament to that. I'll share with you what his teacher, who's assigned to the program, said. He only knew street life. He was so curious and anxious to learn that he had no shame in asking questions that others laughed at. He had a child at home to support, and he took advantage of every opportunity that we gave him. The next story is about another young man. He earned his high school diploma with us, OSHA-10, OSHA-30, served safe, and 11 employability certificates. And he used those credentials to get himself a job at a local restaurant when he left us. And then the last story I want to share with you is about a young woman. She got her high school diploma, her OSHA-10, and 11 employability certificates. And then we partnered with Go Jobs in Tansmo Parish to get her a job at a local food processing plant so that she could support herself as well as her child. Thank you for your time today.
Great stories, no doubt. Those are the stories that give us fuel, right? And I can, I can pour this group the same. So let me ask, any questions from the board?
Just one. In giving us good examples of success stories, are you, you know, do you have measurable outcomes so that you can compare numbers, if you will? I mean, no, it's a new program, but as you go forward.
I tell folks that the program's two years new, especially with COVID having hampered us a little bit. We do keep data on that. My apologies for not having brought the data. However, I can tell you, in the first year of our partnership with North Shore Tech, we had about 35 kids get their high school diploma. And of those 35, I think roughly 15 to 20 have went through certification programs with North Shore Tech. And all of those youth have been successful in their further progress at the detention center, as well as what we've heard when they have left out into the community.
What is the age of the population, you sir?
Good question, sir. So in Louisiana, ages 10 to 17 can come into juvenile detention. And these are youth that are detained for the exact same things that adults are detained for. A majority of our kids today and all across the country are representative of more violent offenses. 60 to 70% of the kids that come into juvenile detention are either coming in on weapons-related charges or violent offenses.
What is the gender makeup of the population, you sir? I know you co-ed. Could you share that with us?
At our detention center, like I said, I can hold 133. We only sit at about 75. We're never maxed out. But of those 75 kids, 16 are female. Inherently in juvenile justice throughout the country, females represent a small part of the population and are usually brought into the system through a male or contact with a male.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. A question?
Not having the opportunity or having the help or the access, but really what is the program to help with the disabilities as well?
Disability. We rarely, believe it or not, have someone that comes in with a disability. However, when we do, we usually partner with community. We have community partners that assist in that. I've never. I've never, historically, I don't think I've ever had anyone who had a significant disability that we couldn't figure out a way to work with them.
They see disability and they just basically don't about as much. So I'm sorry, I'm having an earpiece. Often, the staff sees the disability and they just take their hands off instead of giving them the resources that they need to figure out the disability access. And I'm sure that they would like to know more if they heard their stories. But we never heard the resources. They never heard about the programs. And nobody tells them anything because there's no interpreters to be provided. So that's why I'm standing up for their rights.
Very well said. One of the things I would imagine, Joey, as a result of your status as an organization, you have the same responsibility to make accommodations that we have within the higher education space. So you know, sometimes these accommodations aren't necessarily easy things, but that's what we should do. As evidenced by the interpreting services you see right here in front of us. We've got to make sure to provide those services and to make sure that individuals know about them ahead of time. Oftentimes, I think that's where the challenge comes in. Chancellor Wainwright, to the team at North Shore, Joey, thank you guys for what you're doing on behalf of kids in Louisiana. This is a big, big issue, one that I know that we have a role in playing. So thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan, sorry. Sorry. No, it was odd to say that we had a question, not necessarily for this, but certainly thank you, Dr. Wainwright. I think it's a phenomenal partnership. You guys know that I have always enquired about what more we can do for this particular population. So it's incredible to see this partnership. My only question, or really word of encouragement, is that I would certainly love to see how we can scale this. I mean, it's great to provide the services, and I know that it takes a lot of investment to even meet the outcomes that you've met with the 10, the group of 10, and then 15. But we know, as you indicated, that the problem is so much bigger in the state of Louisiana. So I'd be interested in exploring ways in which we can scale certainly this partnership, but at other colleges across our system as well.
Great point. If you go back six years ago, I believe it was, we were the very first institutions to deliver instruction into OJJ facilities, where we were sending that material at night, students were completing the work during the day, and then uploading their work that evening. So we've been at this for some time. But one of the things we came to realize is what you heard Joey say earlier. OJJ is overwhelmed in terms of the number of young people they're dealing with, under-resourced. And so we felt like the organization that Joey represents is a better environment for us to perfect the model and then begin to try to figure out how to scale and bring OJJ along with us. So it is certainly part of a broader strategy, one that unfortunately, we kind of had to take a step back to go forward on. All right, very good. Thank you again. Appreciate it. If we can, I'd like to take an item, Madam Chair, out of order, if we can today. We have some very special guests who are joining us for an item that is on the agenda. I'd like to ask, if we can, Chancellor Larissa Littleton-Stab, if you will join us at the table. We would like to take the item that is listed as item number I-11 out of order. It is named authorizing naming opportunities at Delgado Community College. And along with Chancellor Stab today, we have a number of friends and colleagues who are joining us. And always good to see familiar faces in joining us for the board meeting. And Chancellor Stab, this is one of many initiatives that Delgado has underway right now that are aimed at providing support for our students at a much broader level. So with that, Chancellor, I will turn it over to you for a proposal and outline the item that we have in front of us, and then we will take up that item.
Check your mic, please.
Press the button at the bottom.
I see the red light. So thank you. Thank you very much. It is indeed an honor for me to be with you this morning. Delgado Community College has developed what we are calling the Isaac Scholarship Program. It is named after our founder, Isaac Delgado. What this program aims to do is to provide scholarships to minority males. What we know is that in the city of New Orleans, most of the crime is happening by young African-American males. So with that being said, the goal is to raise $1 million. A few weeks ago, maybe even a month ago, I had the pleasure of meeting a gentleman who needs absolutely no introduction, Mr. Dan Kelly, who is the president of Endemian. When I shared with him the goal, the scholarship of the Isaac Scholarship, he leaned in and he said, let me see what I can do. He called me later that day, and he said, guess what? We can do it. So what we have, we have Mrs. Peggy Muniz, who will donate $250,000 to the Isaac Scholarship. She is the wife of Ed Muniz, who has been a longstanding council member, as well as the mayor of Kinnor. And he is the founder of Endemian. It gets even better. Mr. Kelly informed me that not only will we have the $250,000 that will go towards this scholarship, the Endemian crew will donate $25,000 for the next 10 years to Delgado Community College. A donation, an extremely generous donation of $500,000 total that will go towards this scholarship. As such, as such, I am extremely thrilled to erect a sculpture in honor of Mr. Ed Muniz and Endemian. And at the bottom, on the back of that sculpture, it will say that this contribution is made to Delgado Community College to better the students and the communities. We know that the way to end crime and poverty is through education, and that is exactly what the scholarship will do. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Dan Kelly, who then will introduce the members of the executive team of Endemian, who are here with me today.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor. My name's Dan Kelly. I'm the president of Endemian. Endemian was founded in 1966. I joined in 1970. We just completed our 57th parade. And we begin at the Delgado Community College entrance. With me today is Mr. Charles Emilio Bruno, who was a former state representative and president pro tem, speaker pro tem. Pepe is our first vice president. We have Daryl Dokkan, who was our second vice president. And he is also the son-in-law of Mr. and Mrs. Ed Muniz. And then we have Mr. Bill Giardino, who is our secretary. Bill is also on the Delgado Board. And we are very honored to be here today and excited to be able to partner with Delgado to make this happen.
Very good. What an incredible partnership and relationship. By the way, if you have not been on the Delgado City Park Campus for Endemian Saturday, mark it on your calendar. What's the date next year?
February 10th.
February 10th next year. Mark it on your calendar. It is a very special day. When you see young kids playing ball at Delgado in the front lawn, getting ready for a parade, it just doesn't get any better than that. That's what Mardi Gras season is about in so many different ways. And so thank you to the crew. Thank you for the generous contribution and for the relationship. Let me open it up and ask if there, any member of the board have questions or comments?
I would just say, as a native New Orleanian, thank you. It's incredible to see a cruise participate, you know, not just in the revelry and the fun of New Orleans, right? And Mardi Gras, but also stepping in to really be a part of creating solutions in our city. And it's so important that you guys step up and lead in this manner and create the types of partnership that you're doing today. So I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Also, February 10th is the date of our founder's birthday. So it's going to be a very special year for us and for him.
Sounds like we need a statue by that day, right?
Yes.
Again, too, I just want to thank you all for your leadership and for really kind of setting the trend, hopefully for the entire state, that we could do this throughout our system with your good leadership. So thank you very much.
And one last thing, we've had the pleasure of being able to work with the Delgado baseball team to help us load the floats when they're not in school. And that has really helped Endemian out a lot. And we helped to participate with them and some of the needs that they have for their team also.
Excellent. Coach Joe and those boys do a lot of work around the town, in many ways. Well, thank you so much. Very much appreciated. It's good to see friends that we haven't seen in a while. But again, thank you for your contribution to Delgado and to the kids in New Orleans. That's reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
If we can, I'd like to ask that we transition to item I-11. And certainly, I can provide that recommendation if I can find my little magic piece of paper here, Katie. We'll read the recommendation. As Joe Marine says, "As such, staff recommends that the board authorize the naming opportunity for Delgado Community College, which is in accordance with the Board Policy 4.003. Naming of LCTCS facilities, the sculpture honoring Edmund J. Muniz, Endemian Parade Founder and Captain, will be located on the Delgado City Park Campus."
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Salat? And a second by Mr. Tubes?
Right, members of the board, you've heard that recommendation. Is there any objection to the motion as presented? Hearing that motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. All right, if I can, I'd like to ask Chancellor Tenny if she would join us at the table today. I know she has members of her team that are with her as well. But I think a very exciting initiative that I've had an opportunity to share with individual members of the board. But today, Chancellor Tenny is here to talk with us about just incredible work. I see in the back, I see Missy Lacour. I cannot allow this session to go on much further without just simply saying thank you for the incredible support that Missy has provided for this initiative. And you will see in a second why that is so very important to the point that was made earlier around scale. So with that, Chancellor, I'll turn to you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the snapshot of where we are with following a theme of partnership, collaboration, and investment in our students. This is one certainly that brings our students onto the same playing field in order of providing them the materials that they need to be successful. As you know, it was fall of 2022 when Nunes Community College had executed an RFP, because there were two challenges that our students were faced with, which was a delay in access to the materials on the first day. And in some cases, it was weeks before they were getting their supplies or materials for their coursework, as well as the high cost of the textbooks and the supplies. Later in the fall, Dr. Sullivan approached me with the opportunity to serve as a pilot institution for Fallet. And we worked with Fallet aggressively to be able to prepare for the start of the spring semester to afford our students an equity model for access of textbooks. And what that equity model allowed was that all materials would be provided for students. With the exception of papers and pencils, students received any type of equipment, supplies, materials, any instructional support that they would need to be successful for the course. That was provided to them at a negotiated rate, a flat rate per credit hour. The equity model was able to be negotiated because we learned quickly that there were some exemptions. All students opted in, so this was made available for every student. But some of our partners in the dual enrollment realm had materials. So we were able to go course by course and remove fees for students. Also, for the open educational resource materials that were provided at no charge, we were able to remove those fees for students. So we were able to reach a negotiated price of $24.50 per credit hour for access to all course materials. In this model, the faculty still chooses content for their courses, so they have that option. And with that, I always manage to mess up the IT. There we go. We've learned quite a few things in this process. So, there we go. Yeah. So basically, in this process, 63% of our students by section received materials. What you'll see that equates to, as in totality, 86% of our students had access to materials. Of that, 25% of our sections did not either require materials or they had materials, so they were exempted. And then 12% were canceled courses. We also learned that 53% of the students who had this opportunity chose the digital access materials. And so as I struggle with IT, I am not a digital native. Those are individuals born after 1980. But we've learned that most of our students at our age are digital natives. What we've learned is that they weren't opposed to digital materials, using digital materials or able to use those materials. Oftentimes, the barrier was access to internet. So that's one of the challenges that we will continue to explore for our students. 35% of the materials were in supplies, and only 12% actually have selected physical materials. Just a quick snapshot of some data. For our spring enrollment, by comparison, spring 2022 to 2023, we've seen a 13% increase in our enrollment in the traditional headcount. We've seen a 19% increase in our SCH. So while we know that there were multiple factors that we have strategically chosen to identify to drive enrollment, we know that this is certainly one. We have some other data through a survey that we executed to our students that Mr. Reggie Poche will share with you just shortly, that indicate that this opportunity did initiate the students, motivate them to take more courses. So the other small snapshot that we have, and we hope that this is just a part of a larger story for student success. Currently, we're not at a point to have midterm grades, but we are at the conclusion of Mini Semester A. They will be reporting those grades, but one of the data items we were able to call out was how many students have withdrawn in Mini Semester A. That's a pretty significant data point. We are 4% at this juncture in spring 2022 had withdrawn from coursework. We now have less than 1%. So we hope that this will be part of a larger story of student success as a result of being on a playing field of equal access to have materials that prepare them for their courses. I've invited Mr. Reggie Poche with me today. He's the dean of instruction. And as I mentioned, this initiative came together in late fall of 2022. So I really want to commend our team and the people at the system office who collaborated with us to make this possible. Joe Marine, Missy Lacour, certainly, who declined to sit at the table today but was invited. Mr. Reggie Poche, our dean of instruction, really was at the helm and point of contact working with Fallet through the holidays to ensure that these students would have what they need January 18th, when our courses began. So I have invited him to come today just to share with you how that execution is playing out on our campus.
It was my pleasure to work on this project, and I'm very happy to share some data with you. So we polled the students last week, those students who are currently enrolled in our full-term classes and in our Mini A classes, who have participated in the Fallet program from the very beginning. What we found in our poll was that 40% of the respondents reported enrolling in more courses than initially intended, which looks like that may correlate to the increase in our student credit hour count for our Mini A semester. 75% reported an overall good experience with the program. And anecdotally, as a point of contact for students in the program, I can say that many of them emailed me throughout the beginning of the semester with feedback on how they were able to negotiate the system that we set up for them to access our course materials, to access supplies in our campus. And it was heartening to hear them say that they had such a good experience coming in. As Dr. Tenny said, we came from a previous vendor that did not provide the level of service that we now receive in this pilot program. 58% access digital textbooks or digital materials total using a personal desktop or laptop. But that means there is a portion of students for whom But that means there is a portion of students for whom they do not have those materials. So we have, of course, been accessible to them, our library resources where they can use our computer labs on campus. We did find a lot of students in the survey said they were using smartphones and tablets to access their course content, which is possible but not ideal. So we do have to, you know, look at ways in which we can provide students with access to the devices that they need in order to truly use the digital material that's provided to them through the program. 60% said they prefer digital textbooks or have no format preference whatsoever. And we did find too that some of our faculty members did have a preference for the digital format as well. Now, the most striking thing in terms of how the student benefits from this program. What you see here is an example of two actual students. I pulled their course schedules and I pulled the exact resources they were provisioned with for the semester. So you'll see that nursing student there who was enrolled in 16 credit hours. On the open market, if she were to have purchased all of her textbooks and her nursing scrubs and other supplies, she would have paid a total of $1,632.25. In the Follett program, paying $24.50 per credit hour enrolled, that cost decreased to $392. And and students in our nursing alley health program, students in our CT programs in particular, in which they have textbooks as well as supplies to buy, they did save quite a bit. The other example was a process technology student enrolled in 13 credit hours. Again, would have paid $678.75, but ended up being charged $318.50. So significant savings on for that student as well. What we learned in this program and some of that came from our experience of getting it off the ground relatively quickly, or very quickly, I should say, but also from our student respondents, 27% of those students reported not having access to a personal laptop at home, and the others reported no reliable internet connection at home. And these are students who for whom we need to find ways of helping them address those issues if we're going to continue using these digital resources in the classes. Institutionally, we also found a few things out with our processes and infrastructure. One thing that I noticed in my time at Nunez is that we yet to have a culture in which students have embraced their campus email. And we are making strides, I think, in order to get our students to communicate to us primarily through that campus email. And the Follett program actually was a blessing for that one quirk of the Nunez culture among students to where they had to use their Nunez emails in order to access these resources. Another thing, we all know Wi-Fi dead spots. We have one very small Wi-Fi dead spot on our campus. It happens to be in one of the busiest sections of campus back in building B, where I did receive some concerns from students saying I was reading my textbook and then I just lost my Wi-Fi. So we're going to address that. One of the more significant access issues, something that was out of our control and Follett's is supply chain issues. We, you know, ordered everything we could late November, early December. But we were a couple of weeks into the semester before all the suppliers arrived, the particular suppliers that cost a lot of money. Interestingly, or maybe humorously, we offered a ceramics class this semester. And Follett ordered for the students in the class 2,000 pounds of clay. The 2,000 pounds of clay took about four weeks, maybe as many as five weeks to arrive. The vendor canceled the order twice, thinking it was a joke because they never sent clay via freight before. But the clay did arrive last week and the students started using it. Another thing was just, you know, resistance from, you know, faculty and certain students who, you know, we're setting our ways and we are accustomed to doing things a certain way. I I will say that, you know, once we gave faculty a test drive of the system of Follett setup for us, many of them were easily able to negotiate it and as well as their students and gain access to that. One other concern that came out of faculty's point of view was and in our discussion with Follett, by the way, how O E Rs are handled in this program. Typically, Follett has two types of programs. They have the inclusive program and then the equity program. Inclusive means that an institution of everyone adopts for their courses. Equity program means that you can choose. So for example, if a course is using an O E R, that course does not have to participate in the Follett access program. So you opt out for that. But that also means that the students don't have that choice. You know, the institution will say, well, this course has, oh, we also opt out. And then it becomes an issue where you have to decide what is better for the students. Should we go into the equity model or the inclusive model? And I think institutions have to have that discussion amongst themselves with faculty to see, you know, is it worth going for the equity or the inclusive model of this program? I will say with regard to O E Rs, we did have some faculty, and one in particular I'm remembering right now, who actually opted for one of the big publishers' textbooks in lieu of an O E R he had been using previously because the the product from that publisher, in his opinion, as the instructor of that course, was of a superior quality than the O E R he was using, which he used simply because he wanted previously to offer his students some type of resource at either free or relatively low cost. But the the courseware he went to with this publisher in lieu of the O E R, because the Follett program existed for him, he said worked out better for his students and that they gained more resources integrated directly into Canvas that they could use. And this is particularly important in courses that use courseware, the science and courses in particular. To get this program off the ground, I think it was important for us to have, you know, representatives from each stakeholder that is on our canvas, particularly academics, information technology, and enrollment management, just to make sure we were all coordinating the workflow of gathering the data Follett needed. It's my understanding in my meetings with them that the way we did this was an ad hoc process. When they work with the institution, more is automated. We didn't even have the time for them to create a website for us through which faculty can order their own textbooks. We did it more through spreadsheets because of the timeline that we we had. But that process was still easily enough negotiable to where we were able to get this off the ground in in a little bit under two months. Additionally, we just had to make sure our messaging to students was clear. We had to make sure that we, you know, sent them a definition of the program we were offering. We had to make sure they understood how to negotiate our LMS in order to access their content. That they had to check their student email. We had to give them directions on how to access their student email. And we had to communicate those messages to them across platforms. So we text messaged down through Signalvine. They received emails. We had posters set up all over campus. We asked faculty to reach directly out to their students in their individual classes. And I think it did work, students, you know, to get the message. Probably the the most commonsensical thing we did, and it was one of the last things we thought of to do, was to create create an email address, you know, named followaccess@nunez.edu. And that has been an indispensable tool in order just to steer the questions. So all in all, I I would say that I think our students are by and large complimentary of the program. They found it useful, especially the savings that they realized. I think also the access that they've gained, they also find very, you know, convenient. One thing that I think is worth also mentioning, just from our administrative point of view in terms of how this program affects other things that we do. One item in particular was that it significantly simplified our dual enrollment bill because we were able to charge the same price per student instead of having to calculate a different price for every single dual enrollment student that set foot on our campus or that we were teaching off campus. That in of itself made us more productive. Also, I I mentioned that the courseware from a lot of the the big publishers, it's robust software that has a lot of useful content for students and that some of our instructors did opt in to courseware where they were previously using O E Rs. And the students, you know, again, started using their email accounts. Now, one last thing is Follett does have, in my meetings with them, said they have an ambition to continue their partnership with Willow Labs. Willow Labs, you know, they have negotiated with certain publishers to make it easier for students to access this course content. Basically, a one click process as soon as it's set up in Canvas or LMS. Willow also keeps the students' information confidential, which always doesn't always happen when the student has to go directly to the publisher to register for that courseware or that textbook. Follett's goal is to eventually make sure that Willow is the platform for all of its offerings. It hasn't gotten there yet, but that's one of their ambitions.
And so with that, we wanted to just share a few testimonials from students currently that were reported on the survey. And I also want to take just a moment to say that as we talked about partnerships and investments today, I want to thank this board for the investment in support of this initiative. The students that were impacted, it it's unique when you can walk across campus and you have students who come up to me and say, thank you. And that thank you needs to be extended to you all because they truly have been impacted by those dollars that they can now direct to wraparound services so that they can complete the semester. These are just a few. One of the practical nursing students with three sons, who said it's a blessing to her and her family that she's not worrying about the fees to prepare the class, so that thank you is extended from her directly. These are actual students. Another was affected, as you know, our campus was affected by tornadoes and people are dealing with loss in multiple ways. And so this came again as a as a benefit to that student and this student as well in terms of just making it stress fee, stress free for a student, the savings, the cost savings, saying that, you know, she just hopes that this program is continued. So we just wanted to share that information with you. And as I said, as we get more information about retention, persistence, graduation rates, we look forward to coming back to share those stories and hopeful of student success. So thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor, and maybe I'll I'll turn to the board and ask if there are any questions from members of the board. Yes, sir. Yes.
I love that program. It helped. It helped me to save money. And I there was one thing. Yeah, I'm sorry. Say it again. There was one thing with the student flow. It was different than the old way, the previous way. And so there was a little bit about complaint about having to change from the old way. And also from the O A Lola. So I don't know if there was something that they were working to fix that area about being able to go back and forth between the Lola system and the student email system. But it was a it was a beautiful, once we were able to do the transition, it was all benefits. And it was a beautiful program and it really gave us the opportunity to be, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be able to participate in that program.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Roman broke my mic. Is this a is this a pilot? Is this done? Are we continuing this? Got the impression that this was a pilot. Are we going to expand it? What what's our next step?
Chancellor, can you talk into the microphone? I apologize.
There we are.
Sorry. So we are releasing an RFP at the end of this this semester, and we will look for a provider. But I will say that we'll go through the RFP process, but certainly have been very satisfied with the level of support that Follett has offered us in order to provide for our students. They also are located physically on our campus as well. They have been there since the beginning and they have been very, very responsive to our needs.
Good. Supervisor, just a quick follow up and for a number of you that have been on the board going back to 2011, 12, I believe. There was a bill that was put forward at the time by Senator Mike Walsworth that allowed for electronic course materials fees to be established by this board. If you are familiar with tuition and fees in the state of Louisiana, it requires a two thirds vote of the legislature. What the legislature did was it allowed for authorized this board to create a fee that is specifically for textbooks to get us out of the business of separating the transaction of enrollment and tuition payment and textbooks. So that that bill authorizes us to go forward and do something different. And this pilot really helps to inform what that model looks like. If you think about our own, your own college experience, you had to go down to the bookstore separate and apart from the college. The question is why? When you know that the W rate is dropping by, you know, think about that rate, almost four percentage points in W rates in 22 and about a half a percentage point in 23, the program pays for itself right there, just that quickly, just simply by every student having a textbook. So you've heard a lot today from multiple folks providing resources for our students to articulation agreements. This is one of those areas where we are building a better mousetrap for our students. We're reducing costs and we're making education more possible for those students. So excited to see what happens with with this initiative. I think it's going to change. I I notice Supervisor Roman Hardy, who has young folks in college right now who wishes he had that similar kind of fee opportunity every semester, right? So I know a number of you up and down the dais have experienced what those textbooks look like. But other questions or comments from the members? Yes, sir.
And this is amazing. I guess my question is, are a number of other colleges using Follett as their vendor for textbooks? Or would this necessitate them obviously switching vendors who they, how is that working?
Currently, the institutions have various vendor agreements. There are a few. I would like to thank Chancellor June. I know that he has helped us set the stage with Follett. Some of the Willow adoption and integration that was required by IT, we were able to navigate it relatively quickly because of previous relationships with the colleges in our system. So I I think that there's a conversation at another level in terms of, you know, a single provider.
Are the vendors doing this kind of thing with with our the colleges? Is that happening?
So there there are, what you're seeing happen in the bookstore business, and I'll point out that there's a difference between bookstores and publishers, right? The bookstore vendors are are becoming fewer and fewer. And what they're beginning to realize is, is I think the industry standard was 56% of the students enrolled in college classes purchase textbooks. 56%. Let that sink in. I mean, I I feel like I got gypped because I think I bought books from far more than 56% of my courses going through school, right? So the the fact that 56% of our students would be buying textbooks would speak to the failure rate, the W rate, and some of the challenges that these students are facing. So a movement of, yes, we are spending enough money today to support those bookstore operations, but we should be spending that same dollar and getting access for every student, not spending the dollar and getting access for 56%. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. That's the equity notion of this thing is we're spending enough money with bookstores. We simply need to make sure that that dollar gets all of the materials to all of the students. All right. Thank you, Chancellor. Very, very good work. Look forward to a continued update. And we'll also look forward to perhaps in the June timeframe Supervisor Smith, circling back to your point, talking about the possibility of materials fees as a part of the June meeting. All right, I do have one final quick update for you from the presidential report. I want to introduce to you the newest member of the LCTCS Board Office Team, but someone who is no stranger to the LCTCS, and that's Mr. Chandler LeBeuf. Dr. LeBeuf comes to us from Fletcher Technical Community College, where he has served as the Advancement Officer there. He will be taking on the 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 new role that is Governmental and Public Affairs Officer. So Chandler, welcome to you. And yes, you will note that Chancellor Strickland is not able to be with us today. She does have a prior commitment. It's not because she was mad at us, okay? I just want to make sure to dispel any rumors out there that may may have come about. All right, let's shift if we can to the board development session. You've heard a lot this morning about all that is going on, from transfer agreements to contributions to our colleges and their missions, to the work going on in juvenile justice facilities, to improving the operations of our colleges. But today, we wanted to spend some time with you talking about before pandemic and after pandemic. I know that all of us recognize that the pandemic fundamentally changed nearly every business that you can think of. It changed our business too. I'd like to ask if we can, Susie Shaw and Joe Marine to come forward, providing an update to you on what has happened from an enrollment and a finance point of view as we think about pre pandemic and the new world that we have now to operate in. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you guys and and I'm thinking maybe, Joe, are you going to kick things off?
I'm going to try. Yes, sir. Technologically illiterate, but anyway, good morning, members of the board. Obviously, many of you have questions, have had questions in the past about where we've been, where we're headed, especially given all that's happened with COVID-19. where we've been, where we're headed, especially given all that's happened with COVID nineteen. So we wanted to give the board an overview of, of really, again, where we are and where we're headed. Katie? Okay, there we go. So again, some of this is very basic, but we're gonna recap this information for, for both uh those of you who've been here for a while and those who are you, are new members of the board. But in essence, we are unlike any other higher education system in the state of Louisiana, if you think about it. Most of us are experienced in, in university shaped how we think about higher ed and that's simply in terms of a credit hour production student. We're, we're very different in the sense that we really have three types of students that come to our colleges. One of them is our credit hour students, obviously your typical traditional students. To give you some idea of the, the funding split that we get from the students, it's a fifty-fifty split between the state and tuition. As Supervisor Murphy remembers, uh twenty plus years ago, the state provided ninety to ninety-five percent of the funding for technical colleges. At one time, it was free, no tuition. Uh, that has drastically changed in recent years with, with Grad Act and other, other, other things that have happened uh and made us very much more susceptible to enrollment fluctuations that we didn't have in the past. Moving on to number two, our non-credit programs or your workforce training programs, those are typically a hundred percent funded by the, the revenues generated from tuition and, and or fees related to those programs. And lastly, we have your adult basic education students who uh are primarily funded with federal and state funding. And when we talk about adult education, we're not just talking about uh, you know, GED, uh, those trying to get their GED or high set scores. It's uh Spanish or English as a secondary language, obviously, and that's a, a, a larger issue facing the state going forward as we have more and more um individuals coming in to the state. Over time, this representation is, shows the enrollment that has changed over time with um our three pots of students. And you, you'll notice we hit the high mark on our non-credit, I mean, our credit students right when COVID hit. And our non, our workforce and our adult basic ed students grew up until that point in time, but, but all three suffered after when COVID hit. Uh, I would like to state that, that for the numbers for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we're still obviously in that period, but the credit students are on the upswing. We are rebounding in that area. We are on par to continue with our workforce students uh kind of level at the moment, but we hope to grow that. And, and lastly, our adult basic ed students are still are the ones that are primarily suffering, I believe, from the, from the effects of COVID nineteen and the, and the societal challenges that they have. These, again, are, are students who have uh need face-to-face instruction. They are not uh able to, to really be facilitated with online delivery, right? If you can't write or read, you can't, can't ma- make that bridge. So you need to come in and on campus to uh receive that type of cer- those types of services.
I'm sorry. Before we move forward, one quick uh item to add on this slide. And as, as a number of you are aware, this is one of the slides that we pulled from our advocacy presentation. Uh, but I, I would urge you to take a look at the blue line decline from fifteen sixteen across to about uh eighteen nineteen and the almost equal opposite increase of workforce enrollments from fifteen sixteen to that seventeen eighteen. You see those two lines beginning to come together. As they're coming together, ultimately what that says is students are voting with their feet and choosing workforce training programs over credit-based programs. That's a fundamental shift for us. And so we were, we were watching these trends long before the pandemic hit. And then it caused us to ask the question, what happened after the pandemic? So this is, this is all part and parcel of the setup of where are we headed? Uh, if you know in a retail environment that every student, every person that walks through is gonna spend fifty bucks and these students are walking through the door and they're spending different amounts by these different categories. That's the, really the most important point here is that we are seeing students come to us and the dollar value is, is reduced. So uh, Joe, I know you're gonna get to that point in a much uh more direct way.
And here we are.
There we are.
So in essence, uh, Dr. Sullivan asked us to do a review of the revenues that are generated by your student populations. And what you see in essence is um your credit students obviously are the top line and they're, they are pretty constant and flat. And again, it's because we have a set tuition and rate, tuition and fee schedule on a credit hour basis. So if a student rolls in more hours, they're, they're paying a, a higher tuition rate. Uh, adult basic ed students are on the bottom where you see the distribution between uh federal and state funds. And I would like to highlight that the level of funding that we have available to us, to the system, to the state for this purpose has been the same level that was given to us when we received adult basic education back in fiscal year eleven. So imagine a twelve-year inflationary factor over time on those dollars. Face value, they're the same, but if you think about the spending power of that dollar over time, we are, we have less and less dollars available now than we did back in twenty-eleven uh for a population that has the, probably the greatest need in the state for resources. And, and the middle is, is the dollars that are generated and as you see the growth in it for the non-credit workforce training side. Again, as Dr. Sullivan stated, it's individuals who are recognizing the value uh and maybe even the necessity of time being available to get in, get trained, get out, get to work. They just don't have the time. As Dr. Sullivan mentioned, it's, it's their greatest enemy uh in this process. And we'll continue that discussion in this presentation. Just to recap, uh in twenty nineteen, March twenty nineteen, when COVID hit, we thought we were all gonna go home and have a two-week vacation. And here we are years later. We moved immediately to online delivery and, and to uh for, and moved to COVID mitigation measures. And at the same time, given all the uncertainty and the instability, the federal government nationwide through all sectors of, of industry and society started infusing dollars to provide some stability. Um, to give some, just a brief recap, for the LCTCS system, we've received about three hundred and twenty-five million dollars uh in federal funding since the beginning of COVID, of which about a hundred and twenty-five million went to direct student aid, the remaining two hundred so far million is, has been used by the um colleges in our system for mitigation measures, for um offset of uh tuition revenue declines from enrollment declines and other measures. But again, that definitely did serve its purpose of providing that stability to bridge us to where we are right now. So what do we know? We, we ended the fiscal year twenty-two, started fiscal year twenty-three very fiscally sound. All our colleges are in, probably in the best financial shape that they could, they've ever been as a result, again, of all the dollars that have been infused and so forth and measures taken by them to, to beef up and, and, and solidify their enrollments. But we know this, this June, that COVID dollar will end. So it, it really takes the, the safety net out from under us and it's, it's high time that after three years, everyone, both the four and two-year schools, get their acts together to move forward with the plan of how we go forward in dealing with what's gonna come. And what's gonna come is, is in essence, the last bullet, the continuation budget, which, just to put some context in this, a continuation budget for the state is a budget that projects out your revenues and your expected expenditures based on certain assumptions, like an inflationary factor. Uh, it'll, it could include a factor for merit increases, but with that built in, while we have a four hundred and about fifty million dollar surplus this year for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five, they're projecting a hundred and seventy-three million dollar deficit. And again, that's based on continuation. That number is gonna fluctuate. It could be a, a zero, really a flat budget in essence. But in fiscal year twenty-five, we face the cliff. When the four-fifth penny tax rolls off, uh where we face a nine hundred and thirteen million dollar deficit. And really, that's, that's the cliff that we have to be mindful of, the wall that's coming, that we've got to be able to make sure that we've implemented practices and throughout the system to not only maintain our enrollment, but to grow it. Cause that's the name of the game. I'll pass it over to Susie.
Thank you very much, Joe. So yeah, Joe has explained where we are and uh to some degree what it is that we need to plan for. So I just want to talk a little bit about what those plans are. And we've got a set of pretty clear takeaways from what Joe just showed us. We need to focus on overall enrollments. We need to look at our enrollment mix and we need to look at profitability. We've been talking a lot about revenues, but we also do need, need to take a look at those cost profiles and make sure we're keeping an eye on um the P and L. One of our major initiatives is an expansion of non-credit programs. And that's something that's been underway for quite a while and you saw that in the data. Uh, and as Monte talked about, we do have a strong indication that our customer is um moving towards the non-credit model. We also know that our industry partners generally find a lot of value from the non-credit model. We get folks through training programs that provide them with the skill sets that they need to be productive with as little fluff, as little waste of time and money as possible. It's an excellent model overall and one that we're looking at very seriously. It is possible also to look at the profitability of our non-credit programs and our credit programs. And generally speaking, we do have a lower cost uh to a significant degree, um even in terms of the dollar per student for those non-credit programs because we're not providing a lot of the infrastructure of our colleges, things like general education programs and so on to those students. We do see a really significant um profit profile there. So we're looking at expanding our non-credit programs, but this is not just non-credit for the sake of non-credit. We need to be making sure that these programs are very well aligned to the needs of our economy, that they are providing the kind of wages that will allow our students to lift themselves out of the middle class and support their families and provide a really clear return on investment for the student, for our communities and for the state as a whole that can be illustrated very quantitatively. We are looking at a number of strategies to improve our overall profitability and to improve our institutional practices in terms of decision-making about the programs that we offer. You heard some examples of those already today. So we are looking at program sharing and models like that. Program sharing models allow us to deliver existing programs in new places at significantly lower cost to the institution and potentially to the student than we would if we were standing up those programs from scratch. We can also employ models like you heard about earlier today where we're sharing accreditation so that we have an opportunity using the program sharing and those accreditation models to ensure that even if we do eventually stand up an individual program at that college that it has been demonstrated to be financially successful, that we have the student demand necessary to support the faculty costs, the equipment costs, the facility costs and so on. So we're able to pilot some programs and have a proof of concept prior to making a firm decision on new programming. We have a lot of creative models like mini semesters. Uh, mini masters uh allow us to compress our programs so that the students get exactly what they need, when they need, in the most time-efficient way possible. And they come at a much lower cost to those students. We have models where students can come in who might already have a degree, but it's not well-aligned to the field that they want to ultimately work in. And we can reduce the cost for those students as well by offering compressed programs. We have inverted degree programs where students can get the technical programs that they're most interested in right up front, go into the workforce and then they can, over time, acquire the general education uh coursework necessary to um get the degree, if that's their goal. You also heard about the first day access model. And I think you saw that that really helped to drive enrollments. And that pulls us into our next conversation here, which is strategic enrollment management practices. This is a very strong emphasis for us. We were fortunate that the Lumina Foundation recently provided us with funding to bring in a consulting team from Acro, which means the American Association of Collegiate Registars and Admissions Officers. I had to make sure I got that right.
That's what I thought it meant.
Yeah, right? Exactly. I'm surprised it wasn't on the tip of my tongue. So this organization speaks to the enrollment experts, right? And they have a consulting group that came in and led a strategic enrollment management workshop with most of our chancellors and also the people that actually do the work on the ground at our colleges. There's a number of follow-ons that we have with them. Lumina has been a great supporter in this space and I really want to thank them for their help and assistance. We've had a number of phone calls with them as well and are looking at some further partnership opportunities. But these are ways to really be smarter about the way that we're running our programs and the way that we're running our outreach to the communities so that we bring in the students that we need to in order to meet our goals. I also do want to really emphasize that in this time of a workforce shortage, we are looking at a number of people out there in our communities, and Dr. Sullivan can speak to this very articulately, who want to be part of the workforce but aren't. We've lost a lot of women out of the workforce during the pandemic and many of them have not returned. There are a lot of barriers that they have. We have barriers that stand in front of people with disabilities in terms of accessing the education that they need and also their opportunity to go to work and be successful there. Part of strategic enrollment management is drawing effectively from every population, from every part of our community so that we're able to bring those folks up through the education and training and into the workforce in the most effective, most efficient way and the, the best way that recognizes the way they live their lives. And then I did mention a bit already about looking at program level profitability before we make final decisions on starting programs, ensuring that we, we've got some projections that um ensure that programs will be profitable and also wherever possible that we, we've done on-the-ground pilot tests to emphasize that. But I also want to return to what I was talking about at the beginning, which is those outcomes for the students. Fundamentally, if we are doing right by our industry partners, by the needs of the economy and doing right by our students in terms of the wages that they can command in that economy, then we will meet our enrollment goals because we are demonstrating that um uh value proposition to our stakeholders that will lead us to the results that we're looking for. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, let me uh ask if we can, Joe, if you'll step back, um, maybe uh to the, to the money slide, one more, two more. There we are. I want you to imagine that, uh, look at two thousand twenty-three. A student is uh interested in welding, for instance, would show up and, and would uh provide some form or fashion about two thousand one hundred and seventy bucks to the college for enrolling in a welding program. If that same student wanted to get a AWS welding certification and they showed up and they paid us five hundred bucks, that's the black line. And so the instruction and the outcome is exactly the same. The cost infrastructure and the cost to the student is very different. And so as we continue to go down this path of profitability models, we're gonna need to have a much better sense of which of these makes sense to employ at different points in time. Uh, the scale question becomes really uh tough because you may recall, we've had colleges that sort of grew themselves to death almost because they were, as they grew and added new sections, they were adding new cost that they couldn't keep up the revenue picture for. It's really important that we understand this in two thousand twenty-three because two thousand twenty-five is coming. Keep that in mind. We are having a discussion today in two thousand twenty-three that my hope is all of our higher education colleagues are having the same discussion in two thousand twenty-three and not waiting until two thousand twenty-five. So we'll continue to look at these models, begin to do some of the projections. Now, given what we believe, uh, we have kind of a baseline of data, we can come back to you with some of those projections. As we get a better sense of enrollment management, we can begin to do a better job of projecting revenue than we've been able to in the past. Uh, thank you to Joe and to Susie for incredible job and the amount of work that has gone into getting us to this point in the discussion. Let me open it up and ask if there are questions from the members of the board. Sure.
I noticed that we don't have uh credibility programs, but my opinion is put out that we should have credibility that doesn't exactly go into that certain class, but maybe one or less. Uh, that way we have more students involved with experience and helping them to improve their GPA. So if it's not included, then it's not, they're not gonna typically be in, interested in with their grades.
One of the great point, and I, I think it's, I think the, the part of the challenge that we have is so many of our students show up at college as first-generation college students. And so we wind up having to teach students how to do the college routine. Well, the truth of the matter is, is that now there are multiple versions of the college routine. So now it's incumbent upon us to try to teach students differently, to make sure that they understand that they do have a choice. You have a choice of a shorter-term certification that may require you to come out of pocket with cash or the longer term that might allow for more of the financial aid uh picture. But remember, this is precisely the reason why we're pushing so hard on the federal workforce PEL initiative. We need the federal government to step up and pay for short-term training in the same way that they do degree programs in art history. Nothing against art history, but we provide funding for that. Why would we not provide funding? Why would we not provide funding for those individuals getting short-term certifications in high-demand fields? Other questions from members of the board? All right. Thank you very much again, Joe and Susie. Appreciate your work. With that, Madam Chair, apologies for the length of the President's report, but I think all good stuff, lots of good stuff going on.
Lots of good stuff. Very encouraging.
I will, I will turn back to you for our general action items.
All right, members of the board, we're now go to general action items and the first will be academics. We'll have Supervisor Roman Hardy present the action items for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items for consideration by the board. The first is accreditation update, which is for information only.
Doctor Sullivan. A very quick request, if we could have Dr. Spillers as well as Dr. Sawtelle join us at the table. Would like to ask the two of them to give a very brief update on where we are with pursuing accreditation. Just as a very general overview or reminder, Central Louisiana Technical Community College, all of their documents are submitted at this point. We are awaiting that visit coming up in a few months. At Northwest Louisiana Technical Community College, maybe one of the more complicated accreditation stories that we've ever had to deal with. Here's a college that is currently going through a reconsideration of their COE status. They are going through programmatic accreditation in a number of their, their specific programs and at the same time trying to prepare themselves for SAC. So lots going on at Northwest. But if we can, perhaps we'll begin with you, Chancellor Spillers.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm there.
There we are.
Okay. So, good morning, Chairwoman Mount, President Sullivan, members of the board. I would like to start this morning with a very humble thank you for the opportunity to take on the new role as Chancellor of Northwest Louisiana Technical Community College. I'm so excited about this opportunity and have lots of plans as we move forward and look forward to providing future updates. So thank you for that. So along with SACs this morning, my understanding is that we're close to review. They have not reviewed the initial application as of yet, but they have looked over the financials. And so that's where we are. I'm waiting to hear an update, hopefully within a month about where that will be. Our COE, we are working on our self-study right now. That is due in May and we do have a site visit set for the week of September the 5th. And then in addition, as you mentioned, we do have a program accreditation and that is our ATME for instrumentation program. Our self-study is due next week. And then we are also scheduled for the site visit as of April 23rd through the 25th. So that's where we stand on all of those situations.
Excellent. Chancellor Sawtelle?
Press the button.
Now, if the sound guy can't handle.
There you go.
We got real challenges here as a music man.
Good morning, Chairwoman Mount, Mr. President, members of our board. Happy International Women's Day. It's again an honor to come before you and share of the progress that we have been making in, in what is truly been a marathon for our college, but a good marathon. As Chancellor Spillers mentioned, we are still accredited as two colleges separately by the Council on Occupational Education. We, we would, if we were to move forward with them, we would, we would see them again in 2027. And in the spirit of accreditation, as she mentioned with their ATME accreditation, we also have an accreditation that we just had last week programmatically with our HVAC program under HVAC Excellence and that program was given six years extension on reaccreditation, which is of their highest. So congratulations to that department and everyone that had a part of it. In, in terms of our Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges progress, we're pleased to share that we are 33 days away from their coming to Central Louisiana and visiting all of our campuses. That is going to be the week of April 10th. How do I know that? That's my wife's birthday. So that's easy to remember and in their coming, we are in constant contact with them. We are providing them the most recent applications. And even though the application itself is about 150 to 200 pages long, there are 1,100 supporting documents. It's like a giant website. So if we say that the Louisiana Community Technical College System was created in 1999, there's a link there that goes to the legislation that they can, they can read at their leisure. So it's, it's massive. And I truly want to thank everyone that has put their hand. Every time I call Dr. Sullivan, he says first words, what can we do to make sure that your SAC's visit is a successful one? Want to thank his team who has just been off the charts and of course our team and teams across the state who have, who have really put their hand and their, their equity into our, our success. This would be the first of two prescribed, if we're successful and we, we hope to be. This would be the first of two visits that they would make, one in April and then they would go before their board in June. And then there would be one in the fall and then hopefully this would be approved in December. That's an optimistic and ambitious approach, but Mr. President, that is, that is where we are.
Optimistic but reasonable.
Yes, sir.
Right? Very good. Any questions for our chancellors? Thank you very much. Appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
We can shift to item number two.
Yes, item number two is a recommendation from staff. Staff recommends that the board accept for review and advisement the retirement of LCTCS Policy 1.046, delegated authority relating to the Grad Act.
If, if there are no questions on that one, we can move forward to item number three.
Item number three, staff recommends that the board accept for review and advisement amendments to LCTCS Policy 2.018, Campus Free Expression. Any comments, questions?
I think, Ms. Chair, the items three and four are actually in response or, or updates that have been made as a result of changes in state legal requirements. So both of those are for review and advisement and certainly we, we've, our guru in this space, Amber, can help us to, to, to walk through these items if you have questions.
Okay. Just read the, go ahead and read the last recommendation and then turn it to the board for any questions. Sure. Last one, staff recommends that the board accept for review and advisement amendments to LCTCS Policy 9.001, Power-Based Violence and Sexual Misconduct.
Amber, would you like to, to give the board just a couple of quick updates on what this, what this review and advisement is about?
Of course. So just as a point of clarification, the employee definition, which is far into the policy on page 30, just to clarify that employees who are also students remain responsible employees and mandated to report. So that's just a clarification and a cleanup that was made at the Board of Regents level and all of the systems are following suit.
Very good.
And everything of yours. All right. Next, we'll have the facilities. Supervisor Salath. We'll present that, those items, please.
Yes. Okay. The first item on the agenda is to Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the LCTCS on behalf of the River Parish's Community College, the River Parish Community College Foundation and the Ascension Parish School Board.
Yes, sir. All agreements, contractual or otherwise, are always required with limitations, are required to be approved by the board. This is one of them. This is a cooperative endeavor agreement, as Mr. Salath mentioned, between the college, the RPCC Foundation and the school board. So you might ask, you know, what is, what's going on here with all three, right? Because this is just a little bit of odd, odd situation. But in essence, last year, or the year before, I forget which, funds were provided to RPCC and House Bill 2 for an expansion of a campus. At that point in time, the local area high school approached them saying that, hey, they expressed an interest that it would be, would be beneficial to all parties involved, both in terms of the local high school students and also the general public, if, if they used a space at the Ascension High School in Donaldsonville. The foundation then was approached by private industry in terms of being available as a venue to provide private donations towards this venue as well. So that's where you get all three parties tied into this cooperative endeavor agreement. So again, establish a section of the high school to retrofit it, to provide training for both, both the students on campus and the general population in Donaldsonville. As such, staff recommends that the board, I'll say as such, Dr. Sullivan. As such, staff recommends that the board authorize the LCTCS president, the chancellor of River Parish's Community College and River Parish's Community College Foundation president to negotiate and complete all the requirements necessary to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the system, the college, the River Parish's Community College Foundation and the Ascension Parish School Board.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there any opposition?
There's a motion by Mr. Roman Hardy. Is there a second? Mr. Smith?
Any opposition?
Just a, just a question. So, so Joe, so we got some capital A dollars. We got some general fund dollars and then we're going to potentially raise some private dollars. That's what's laid out here.
Correct.
And the improvements would be made at Donaldsonville High School.
Correct.
Some kind of way.
Correct.
Okay. Complicated but fine, right? That's it, Madam Chair.
Members of the board, I'd like to note for the record that we did have a member have to depart early. And so Mr. Jackson, if I note on the record, is no longer a voting member of our delegation right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. This seems interesting. I don't know how unique. A little bit more about how it came about. Can we replicate this?
Maybe let's ask Chancellor Taylor, if you will, please come forward. And I think all of you are familiar with the geography of this part of the state. Unfortunately, we have not probably provided the level of service to the people of the west side of the river and Ascension Parish in that part of the world as perhaps we should have in the past. And Chancellor Taylor, in, in early on in his time with the college, grabbed a hold of this one and has run with it. So Chancellor?
Thank you, members of the board, Dr. Sullivan, Chair Mount. So in short, the way Joe just described it, there wasn't an offer by a private entity in Donaldsonville to give us a building. It would have caused millions and millions of dollars to go in and retrofit that facility. And at the time, the college was not in a position to do that and it didn't make good business sense. We had conversations with the school district and inside of Donaldsonville High School, there are two old shops, wood shop, metal shop that just have been, has been dormant, quite frankly, for 10 or 15 years. So we felt like the better use of the, the funds from the legislature would be to go in and retrofit and provide training for students during the day. And the goal is their parents or community folks in the evening. So you've heard a continuous drum, drumbeat here today about all of the partnerships. And so somebody talked about education and poverty being the way, I mean, education being the way out of poverty. We're concerned about crime in that area. And so the thought is that the students, eighth grade, I'm sorry, ninth grade through 12th grade, they'll be able to earn in programmatic, specific process technology, INE instrumentation. And we're meeting with some members of our contract community, Stevie Smith, Stevie Toops, you'd be happy to hear this, where we're going to sit with them and we're forming a small advisor to figure out, okay, we've got all of this expansion happening up and, up and down the river. What are the 10 to 15 short-term skill craft programs that we can offer inside the high school so that when these kids graduate, they have a marketable credential to go to work right in their backyard and hopefully not move out of the community, but stay in that community and make it the thriving community that, that it once was.
Okay, does that, that answer your question? Very good. Others? We, we have a motion on the floor?
Any other comment? We have a motion. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you. The next item is the acquisition of property for Louisiana Delta Community College in Winsboro, on the Winsboro campus.
Yes, sir. This, this campus is, is landlocked and has the opportunity to purchase the land located on either side, on each side actually of the campus. It's a total of eight acres being proposed to be sold for $150,000, $154,000, of which the college will use their, their resources to purchase. But in doing so, it will, it will provide a footprint, a greater footprint for them to expand if need be for either parking and/or future expansion. As such.
As such, come on.
Staff recommends that the board authorize Assistant President and Chancellor of Louisiana Delta Community College to negotiate and execute all documents necessary for the purchase of two parcels of land adjacent to the Winsboro campus. Recording of the property with the Division of Administration, State Land Office is required and a copy of the property's legal description is available in the Office of the Vice President of Operations. A depiction of the location of the property is attached.
You heard the recommendation. Is any discussion?
There a motion by Mr. Price?
Such, I would like him to.
And a second by Mr. Toops.
Okay, any discussion to go along with Mr. Price's nomination? Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you Supervisor Salath. Next, we'll have finance and Supervisor Jackson had a previous obligation and had to leave. So Supervisor Tim Hardy will present the finance action items, please.
I would be honored, Madam Chair. The first item, number seven, review and advisement. Revision to LCTCS Policy 2.005, Student Organizations.
Correct. Yes, sir. And the reason I'm here for this is because it really came about as a, a, a result of an internal audit that was done about six months ago on student organizations regarding cash balances that remained in those student organizations after those students had, had default, not defaulted, but had stopped operating for whatever reason. So we have, we gathered all the CFOs, all the CAOs, all the student affairs officers together to revise this policy to basically provide the safeguards necessary for how a organization, student organization gets started, how it gets monitored, where the funds get deposited. And then ultimately what happens to those funds in the event of that organization ceasing operations for whatever reason. So it's for review and advisement. It'll come forward at a later time for action.
Are there any questions? Hearing the next item. Personal Services Contract Between LCTCS and Echo Tango LLC.
Yes, sir. This is a, a contract that is over the threshold required. It's over $150,000, therefore requiring action by the board for approval. This is a contract with a vendor for the Perkins Federal Carl Perkins Program at our office to provide for animated explainer videos, basically explaining high school, high wage and demand sectors and CTE program offerings, offerings within the LCTCS. Again, it's for a maximum fee of $198,500. Not that we will spend that amount, but it's up to that amount.
Do I have a motion?
Staff recommends that the board approve a personal services contract between the Louisiana Community Technical College System and Echo Tango LLC effective March 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. This contract is subject to the approval of the Office of State Procurement.
Is there a motion?
Motion by Mr. Smith. And a second by Mr. Toops.
Is there discussion? Opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item. Board of Regents matched endowed professorship.
Yes, sir. These, these endowed professorships are set up at the Board of Regents where, whereas we put up private funds and get a, a match by the state. It's a 60-40 split, in this case $60,000 from Cleco Corporate Holdings to Central Louisiana Technical Community College to be matched by $40,000 and from the Board of Regents. Staff recommends the, staff recommends the board approve the endowed professorship below Central Louisiana Technical Community College, Cleco Corporate Holdings LLC endowed professorship and advanced manufacturing. This, this endowment is made possible by a $60,000, by $60,000 from Cleco Corporate Holdings to be matched by $40,000 in state dollars from the Louisiana Board of Regents.
Not to prejudice anyone, but I really like these. Is there a motion?
Motion by Ms. McConduit. A second by Mr. Salath.
Moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there an opposition? I like these. Motion carries. Next item.
Yes, sir. You'll like this one even better. We have before us.
Authorizing naming opportunities of Central Louisiana Technical Community College.
Yes, sir. This one is, is a donation that being made by Cleco for a million dollars. And also the Alexandria Business Foundation for $290,000. I'll, I'll read the, the recommendation. Staff recommends that the board authorize the naming opportunities for Central Louisiana Technical Community College Downtown Alexandria Campus, which in accordance with Board Policy 4.003, naming of LCTCS facilities.
Oh, I like it. I like it 15 times better than the previous one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Look, look, I, I, I like them all, but I'd really like this one. Is there a motion?
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. McConduit.
It's been moving and seconded. Is there a discussion? Except yay. Opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries. Next item. Authorizing naming opportunities at Delgado Community College.
We've already done that one, Mr. Hardy. So our items are.
That was moved up on the agenda. Strike that.
Yes, sir.
And I will turn it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Hardy. Next will be governance. Supervisor Price will present the governance action item for consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Be glad to. One item, revisions to LCTCS Board Stan, Board Standing and External Committee Appointments.
Sure. And Joe, I'll take this one if you don't mind. You, you'll recall that we created a governance committee in, in recent time, I think probably about three years ago. Part of the responsibility of the governance committee is to make sure that we have coverage across each of the committees with appropriate chair, vice chair and membership. One of the things that, that Katie Waldrop does exceptionally well is look at the processes that we have going on within the organization and identifies ways, identify ways that we get better. Every two years, we do a reshuffling of the deck in terms of membership of those committees. What Katie has suggested is let's go back in the February. What Katie has suggested is let's go back in the February, March timeframe each year and review that membership to make sure that it is still appropriate. What we know is we have had changes in board membership. What you have in front of you is the new board membership based upon the new, I'm sorry, the new committee membership based upon the new board membership. So this item does not require action, but just simply wanted to make sure that the board was was aware and accepts the attached revision to standing and external committee appointments. Not going to say it. Governance Committee recommends that the board accept the attached revisions to the standing and external committee appointments of the LCTCS Board of Supervisors. So no action required, just acceptance.
Thank you Supervisor Price. Next Supervisor Tim Hardy present the personnel action items for consideration.
I'd be honored, Madam Chair. The first item is for review and advisement revisions to LCTCS Policy 6.010, performance evaluation and salary increases.
Yes, sir. And I'd like to ask the two Ginas. We, this is a policy that's been in the works for.
A year and a half.
Okay, long time. Involving multiple people and which is one of the reasons why I asked one of the staff persons, Gina Marcel from Fletcher Technical Community College, who's the HR Director from that college. This was a college-led endeavor to revise a 20-year-old policy that really had not seen any substantive revisions since it's since its inception. And I know that in many cases you only see me or Gina at these meetings, but we asked Gina from Fletcher to come up to be able to put a face to the college level because that's where all the works happens, right? It bubbles up here before you with us, but it's really at the local level where it takes place. And with that said, I'll pass it over to Gina to sit.
Okay.
To lead the discussion.
So thank you guys for listening to us this afternoon. Try and do this real quick for you. As Joe said, 20 years since this was last reviewed, we had a lot of work to do. That's why we took 18 months. Gina led the whole way. She shepherded this through all of the colleges. So I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. Our main purpose was to empower employees and supervisors to promote objective, consistent, system-wide forms and policies so that everyone's treated equitably. And also we can use this in the future for pay for performance. So that was our mission when we started looking at this. I'm gonna let Gina talk about a few highlights and I promise we won't take you guys for too long.
Okay, thank you for letting us inviting us here to speak about this. Appreciate this. Just to highlight some of the changes, the burden of proof on ratings like above, I mean, below a three, which a three is meets expectations, remains on the supervisor. But we would like, we are proposing to move the burden of proof on the employee for anything above meets expectations. This way it'll be up to the employee if they want to exceed and receive a higher rating and prove to their supervisor. That's what will help with the pay for performance if colleges decided to move in that direction. The format and scoring remains the same. The sections remain the same that are on the current form. We have just added sections. So we've added multiple sections. We've clarified and condensed some of the document wording. And we are requiring comments for all ratings, not just a one or a two. And the sections and subsections are of equal importance now. So we removed the NAs. The only section that NAs remain is for the supervisor section for non-supervisors.
Gina, if I might, one of the challenges we came across in this process was finding out that that there were difference, there were a few different instruments out there, right? And we have a system where we have employees who may be employed at one, two, or three of our colleges, right? So when it comes time to evaluate them, you may have one instrument one place, one instrument another place and so forth. So it's providing consistency across all colleges going forward. So there's no ambiguity going forward in terms of what is expected from employees in terms of the policy and the instrument being used.
If I may, just one quick clarifying point. This policy focuses on staff.
Correct.
At the community and technical colleges, not faculty. We have pulled apart those two areas, faculty and staff, to make sure that we address the staff component to this first. And we are in the midst of a discussion on the faculty side that we will be coming back to you with at the appropriate time.
Correct, correct. With that said, I'll read the recommendation. As such, staff recommends of the board except for review and advisement, the attached revisions to LCTCS Policy 6.010, performance evaluation and salary increases. Again, for review and advisement only.
Are there questions?
Well, question, comment. I really like that. I love that. It creates the foundation for certainly greater equity across the board. I'd be interested in if part of this process could at some point in the future involve just a review then, once we have then synergized the instrument that's used across the board, across the system, then we can then evaluate then are people being rated equitably using this same tool? So I think I put that on the table for future consideration, but I think that would be incredibly important.
Yes, ma'am. Definitely. This will be a process that will be reviewed. One of the things you find with performance evaluations, not only here, but throughout the nation and private industry is what I call rating creep. Right? Where you start rating individuals and all of a sudden the numbers keep going, getting higher and higher and higher. Right? And so we definitely want to go back and see exactly what's going on. What are the ratings? What's being fed into this and so forth to kind of see if there's areas that we need to kind of tighten up to reevaluate and realign the instrument.
Yeah, we call it a living document. We want it to continue to evolve as we see the trends. We don't want to wait 20 years again. Please don't wait another 20.
Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none. Next item. At this time, I request a motion to enter into executive session, discuss items I 14 through I 16. Is there a motion?
Air motion to enter executive session by Mr. Tubes and a second by Mr. Hardy Roman.
At this time, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Klein, Peter?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Mount.
Yes.
Supervisor Jackson has left the building. Supervisor Hardy.
Yes.
Supervisor Burke. Supervisor Tim Hardy.
Yes.
Supervisor Lee.
Yes.
Supervisor McConduit. Supervisor Murphy. Supervisor Salath. Supervisor Smith. Supervisor Tubes.
Yes.
Supervisor Duratt. Yes. Supervisor Jimenez.
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, you do have a unanimous vote to enter an executive session. I will note for the record that Supervisor Price is exiting the meeting and will not join you in executive session, so was not included in that vote. We are in executive session as of 12:30 PM. We are in executive session as of twelve thirty P M.
Present.
Supervisor Roman Hardy.
Present.
Supervisor Burke.
Present.
Supervisor Tim Hardy.
Present.
Supervisor Lee.
Yes.
Supervisor McConduit.
Supervisor Murphy.
Supervisor Stulat.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor DuRette.
Yes.
Supervisor Jimenez.
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, you do have unanimous vote to enter an executive session. I will note for the record that Supervisor Price is exiting the meeting and will not join you in executive session, so was not included in that vote. We are in executive session as of twelve thirty P M.